Thank you and good evening. We have all board members present tonight. A motion to accept the agenda. Second, by Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the check wire dispersion summary approval with board members from the August twelfth. Work session and the board meeting that followed and the August twenty-sixth board meeting. Resignations, terminations, and renewals as follows. And the Edgewood School Advisory Council bylaws. A motion to accept the consent agenda. Second, by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero. The resolution for gift acceptance and I guess we got a clarification, we do not have to read the entire thing as we thought we did. A motion to accept the monetary gifts as designated here in the resolution. By Chad, second. By Stacy. So we'll call vote. Chad?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Moving on to Laker Pride, we have our special group teachers here tonight. They'll please come forward.
...
...
Science students.
We choose to do this.
Science.
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 Yes.
Yeah.
That is also science. I was thinking of these too because they've been very involved with our robotics team. And we're trying to see what keep them up. And how do you do it?
They asked me about where they were located.
Smart families. Then we have the music teacher. Call music. Yeah. And there's Terry Thomas. Terry White. I think so. Sounds young, but he really does sound. I love the one because once when I cut the, I mean, the other one, I wanted to say, I don't think anyone feels like this kid. But it's something that is awesome. It's awesome. Yep. And we have a fifth member. That's who is our supervisor. So this was a cross-disciplinary experiment. And each of two students were, we could be from out of the universe. And that whole mile, weird way to our students about trying things. It's a practice. And it's something we can do. And we're very proud of the certificate. And how to do that. Thank you very much. Why is it good to build up some experience? All right about usual space. The happy year of this.
Thank you.
Anybody who get a chance. Oh, okay. Sure, go ahead.
There's another part to that video that we probably don't have time to watch, but you get an idea and if you'd like to see it, it's on YouTube. So.
Can we get a link to on our?
We'll put it on our website.
School website. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dan.
Happy gift to middle school. I know Laura has some stuff in her room I saw earlier this year. And is there stuff in all your rooms about it? Yeah. I'll stop by and see it. Thanks. Any questions for, for them? I asked if anybody gets sick and they said no, but we haven't talked to Brett yet, so.
Ah, okay.
Not Marty.
Is there any significance to the different colored jumpsuits?
These are about NASA jumpsuits. Those are actually what those are Air Force.
Okay.
But thank you very much. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to open forum. We have fifteen minutes to decide for any public school member who'd like to address the board. Seeing none move on. We have approval candidates for employment. Yeah?
All right. Good evening. And first up, I recommend the following candidates for employment and exceeding board approval.
Total motion to accept the list of candidates for employment. So, by Dan?
Second.
Second by Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Leave of absence.
And second, may I present the following leave of absence and exceeding board.
Total motion to accept the leave of absence as follows.
So moved.
By Lee. Second. Second by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Moving on to new business. We have the Prairie Lake area schools. Update by Jim.
Good evening, Chair Swornson, School Board Dr. Grover. Very brief update on construction. There's not been a lot of progress since we last updated you at the last board meeting. We have run out the bid for the high school. Hidden Oaks is still in, working to get the air conditioning up and running. It's not as of today. We're working very hard at night to cool the building down so that we can get through the day. Advantage we have at Hidden Oaks is that it's an early release, so I mean, two thirty is about the time it really starts heating up. So we are trying very hard and I'd like to thank the staff at Hidden Oaks for their patience. We also are going to be opening bids for District Service Center, Greenwood, and Glendale Projects. Group A projects approved by the board on Thursday. That's really a pretty brief update. Not a lot of action since last week.
Any questions for Jim? I just have a comment. Thanks. It's been, the group of people that have been phenomenal to work with, the middle school people, thank you very much. I know it's been trying, hopefully that extra day of rest there. I know a few high schoolers said, why not us? But I told them they didn't deserve it, so. It was well deserved. They did a phenomenal job and thank you. I know it's been tough over there, late afternoon, so. Any other questions of anyone else? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
District assessment presentation for the MCA results.
All right. Good evening, Chair Swornson, Members of the Board, Dr. Grover. I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Karen Kennedy, who's our data assessment coordinator. She was hired this summer as part of the whole board approval process for the data warehouse. And so she comes to us from Greenwood Elementary as a, from the far reaches of Greenwood Elementary as a classroom teacher, which is a really valuable perspective because ultimately with our data warehouse, and that's what we'll be talking about today a little bit. It's important with her work, working with teachers, working with staff, and interpreting data. So I want to introduce her to you. She's part of our presentation tonight. We have three things we're going to be sharing with you. We're going to be talking about the MCA two, MCA three results, talking about comparisons, and then getting, and talking about IQ, which is our data warehouse tool from Ties. And that is going to be a different part of this year's presentation because this presentation, I really kind of kicks off two things. Heard a lot about data warehouses in the past, looking at data, and so our process this year is going to be different. But also too, this is really a start as we lead up to the board data retreat in December. As you start to look at data more specifically and we start to bring data to you as part of our vision card process, looking at all the different data that we have, which has been a little bit cumbersome in the past without this product, so. We're going to go right into it.
So some key insights for our MCA data. Overall, the state of Minnesota saw statewide gains in math and science. For reading MCA two thousand thirteen tests establish new baseline information because it is a new test. This release of data is one of two parts of data being released. The first phase was our student results. And the second phase is the multiple measurement ratings. And those will be released on October first. We're still awaiting those. Also, looking forward to next year, online testing is going to continue. We know that there were some testing difficulties in relation to those computer online tests. However, we are continuing to work on that with the state. And moving forward into next year, all MCA testing will be online.
Looking at some of the specific scores, and this was all provided to you in the board packet, as well as some time ago to look at it. One of the things about reading, and as Karen mentioned, it's a new baseline. There is a difference between the MCA two and MCA three. The standards do reflect a different set of skills that kids were tested on from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen. As you can see here, when you look at the differences between the scores of twelve and thirteen, even from grade level, which are different students, third grade to third grade, but also when you look at cohort differences from third to fourth, fourth to fifth, you notice that there are some decreases there across the board. There is a sizable difference between the state and the district for how our students did. Ultimately, in all districts in the state did drop as a result of the new reading standards. They do reflect the common core, and I'll talk a little bit about that. You've probably heard a lot about the common core. Common core is essentially standards that have a higher rigor to it, require a bit more proficiency, but they're more geared toward post-secondary readiness. Minnesota's standards do have the common core embedded into our current DLA standards. So when we're talking about comparisons between the two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, it's difficult to compare because there were different tests. And that's always been a drawback of looking at MCA scores. And the tests change, the standards change, you have more looking at data and AYP and how we measure from year to year. That's the standard that we're held to. And ultimately, that is a piece of the puzzle, but there are other ways that we're, there are other things that we're going to be doing, what we're going to be talking about tonight. So that we're not just looking at MCAs. We're certainly going to be looking at this data. We're looking at the substrate scores, looking at the specific which standards we need to improve on, and we'll take that and work with teachers on that so that we can continue to make good things happen in the classroom. We'll start to look at other data samples too. As I mentioned, there is a sizable difference between the district and the state. We also have some comparisons that we'll be talking about here regarding neighboring school districts as well. Math scores, for, for the most part, we held steady. This is the same MCA three, MCA three. There are a couple areas that I do want to point out here. And if we talk about cohort scores, we see two areas that seem to really stand out from fourth to fifth and fifth to sixth. You know, we did implement a new math curriculum, math expressions, but that, that's a sizable decrease. And so we are going to be taking some time to look at what really happened within that cohort there for math scores. Overall, what you, what we are also seeing here is that the gap between our state proficiency, or excuse me, our district proficiency and state proficiency is increasing. And we've, we've seen, you know, always a sizable difference, but this is even at a greater rate when we're looking at that far right column between proficiencies or grade levels. So we're seeing some good areas of growth there and we want to continue to see those. But there's a couple cohorts that we do need to pay attention to. We would not anticipate that size of a dip. And whether that's a result of implementing new curriculum, or there's some standards that we missed, or that our focus was on just the new materials and really not looking at the assessments or the test specifications. That will be our work as we look forward this year. Science scores, we do see a little bit of a change between twelve and thirteen, but again, we see some very healthy differences between the district and the state. There's one thing I do want to point out, and that's the eighth grade difference. In previous information that was sent out to the board, we did have incorrect percentage there. So the correct percentage is this one that's listed right here. There, there is a greater gap between our eighth grade district and our eighth grade state proficiencies. There are two things we're talking about moving forward this year. We, and that's what's different, and that's a different practice for the district as we look forward to Q count. With Q count, our staff are going to be working in teams, meeting regularly. But the difference is it's setting goals based on data and then throughout the year, monitoring how students are doing relative to the goal and looking at formative and summative data. We've had those opportunities with late, with early release or late starts and staff development days. But one of the things with Q count is that our teams need to meet weekly and look at data and look at how students are doing. And so we're excited about that new framework moving forward this year because we'll have all staff collectively looking at it and then ultimately incorporating the data warehouse to look at other data points too, instead of just the MCAs. The biggest thing that we need to work on as a staff is how we triangulate data. Look at MCAs, but then also looking at app desk, looking at our local assessments, looking at the common assessments that we have, and seeing what does the picture look like for students across the board.
Another next step will be utilizing those English language arts standards that we talked about, the new MCA degrees testing. And so we're going to be guiding far more of our instruction using those standards for daily instruction. Also, in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year, when we implemented the new math curriculum, we were very focused on the teaching and the tools to support the learning of our students. And so as we go into this school year, we're going to be making a shift. We're going to, we will be looking at the assessments we're using and making sure that the assessments we have from the curriculum, that we are purposefully aligning those to our state standards. And then creating common assessments that we can utilize across the district per grade level that are also aligned with the state standards so that we know that in each building, we are assessing our students the same and that we can reflect on that information as a, as a whole district, not just cohorts of individual schools. So we're looking to align our assessments far closer to the standards this year.
There's several districts each year that we look at. The first set of districts that we're looking at here are more your west, west suburban districts relative to state average. For the most part, just a couple things here. We do see, all of these districts did drop as a result of their reading because it was a new test as we talked about earlier. But we're also seeing kind of a similar gap between where we've been relative to several of these districts. We do close, we are closing comparison with Eden Prairie, Eastern Carver County, and also Edina. And particularly in the math column in the middle. This is one area that we've seen something a little bit different this year. In the past, we've always been three or five percentage points below all of these districts. When we look relative to Edina, Eden Prairie, and Eastern Carver County, we outpace them in, in math proficiency. And so that's, that's the first time we've seen this. It's something we're going to continue to look for moving forward. We also look at our south suburban conference and we see some sizable differences between some of our counterparts there. The one district that we do compare well to or very similar to is Lakeville. And that continued to be the case this year with reading and with math, but we're slightly a little bit better in the science area. As Karen alluded to, on October first, there's two more, there's another data set that's coming out and it's focused on the MMR, the multiple measurements rating, as well as the focus rating. This is the state's new way to measure growth from year to year. How did students grow from the year before? We anticipate a better look at how students are going to the individual level, as well as the district level and building level with these new rating systems. And they're looking at multiple categories of proficiency growth, reducing the achievement gap, and looking at the graduation rate for the high school. And so that's going to be another data point that we'll be able to share with you after October. Just a couple more concepts with, with those designations. The designations for, for MMR and focus rating are reward school, celebration school, and they have a host of others. But if you recall, we had four schools last year that, two were reward schools, which was Westwood Elementary and Red Tail Ridge, and two schools that were celebration eligible, and that's Greenwood and Five Hocks. And that was a process that both Patrick Lynn with Greenwood and Tim Bell at Five Hocks had to go through in order to submit an application to state to be selected as a celebration award school. And so that was a process they went through last year. And so all four of our Title I schools did receive either one of the top two distinctions there. And only Title I schools, only schools that receive Title I funding are eligible for these distinctions. So we had, all of our elementary schools scored very well. Now we'd anticipate would have perhaps been, you know, compared to, you know, the four that we have here, may have fallen into the reward or celebration status. However, because they did not receive title funding, could not partake in this part of the process. But again, those designations will be released on thirteen fourteen and we'll start to look at more the growth, particularly for components of the kids. There's a couple other designations, you know, in addition to reward and celebration, and that's continuous improvement, priority school and focus school. And those are designations for title schools in the bottom twenty-five percent below. We do not anticipate that we're at that point, so.
So at this point, we're going to move over and think, start talking about the data warehouse, which is called IQ. And this is a resource that has been, now the staff has been trained in and we have been starting to utilize. So what it is, is it houses all of our current and our past student data. And all our standardized testing is automatically uploaded into IQ, which ensures for data accuracy. There isn't room to enter numbers wrong or information wrong because it's coming directly from the testing source. Also, we are entering within the last five years worth of data is being put into IQ. So we are also on the backside importing all our information from past years. We also have the ability to create local assessments within IQ. If, for example, we give a reading benchmark to elementary students, and so we are able to create an area within IQ where we can enter our own information and our own common assessments. So that is also stored in the same place as our standardized testing is housed. So it makes it very simple for any user to be able to go into IQ and see across the board all of the assessments that our district administers. Another key feature of this is we can enter important dates about a child's education. For example, if they enter or exit an intervention, we can record the dates they start and stop. And we can also enter dates when they are referred to different teams that might look at their academics and provide more insight. And so we can capture the educational picture of a child all in one spot. And so what I'd like to do for you tonight is actually show you some of the screens that teachers are already utilizing. So in the next two screens, I have information that is from IQ. However, it is made up data. It's not any data from our students, so it's all confidential. The first slide I'd like to show you is the first screen that teachers see when they log into IQ. This is called the Test and Assessments homepage. And right off the bat, a teacher can start filtering the scores that they want to see. For example, if I'm a second grade teacher at Greenwood Elementary, I can filter down to either just my class roster of students or I can leave it wider and I could look at the whole grade level as a whole. And I'm going to be using this option that's highlighted in red right here to kind of start filtering down what I want to see. If I was a high school teacher or middle school teacher, I could filter by class right here on classes. And so there's a lot of different ways you can utilize this tool to see, look at the information you want to see. Along the left-hand side here are different clips for reports that are often used. MCA data, map data, oral reading fluency are often called up in the data warehouse. And so what we can do is make it easier for teachers. And on the left-hand side, we can create the reports they most commonly need and they can access it in one click. Now, if there's a report that we don't have in the one-click reports, there's also a drop-down menu that, that staff can access and they can call up any one of the assessments that we have stored in the system. So once they click on the left-hand side or from one of those custom reports, the system will take them to the next screen and they'll see something like this. And this is a picture of what a teacher will see when they are looking at the actual test data. For example, this is map math scrams, so they're looking at the results of their students in math. And what you can see here is when a, when a staff member is looking at this information, they can continue to filter down or hone in on what they want to look. If a synergy teacher is looking at her students or his students, they can go right here to the filter scores. And these colors are color coordinated with proficiency. Blue being the top all the way down to red being well below grade level. And so they can click or unclick the areas they want to see and that will. And so, they can click or unclick the areas they want to see and that will populate or depopulate the list down below of students. Also, a nice feature is when you're within certain tests, there are automatic links that will drive you out of IQ system right into, for example, map. We have the cart, which will take you right into a list of skills that students need to work on when they're scoring in that area, a list of skills that they should have mastered and list of skills that comes next in the progression of learning. And so, this data warehouse not only closes our information, but it's a wealth of resources for our teachers as well. Also, which is what another nice feature, feature is the export feature. If you have worked long and hard to filter down your information and you want to save what you've created so far, you can export to PDF or Excel depending on what you need to save that record. But overall, it's incredibly useful to our teachers. We're already having extremely positive feedback. Teachers are currently using this right now to analyze information for their learning teams for the Q count process and we're getting a lot of good feedback and asking for more and more information as they're diving into it. So, it's been a very positive process so far.
One other thing too, principals are also getting into this tool as well and talking about how different staff groups are doing, whether it's a special ed, students in their building or for interviews, price lunch, to be able to see, you know, what, what's the MCA telling us about these students, but also the math test. And to get a full picture of what you're seeing here, where they're at and how close they are, as well as those resources to guide those conversations. The type, these screenshots that you just see up here, I mean, this happens in several seconds. Prior to the data warehouse, this was weeks of compiling and populating Excel spreadsheets and passing sheets from one end up from teacher to teacher to look at, to add to, to talk about. It was really a cumbersome process and I know as a school board, you heard a lot about that every data retreat, oh, which read the data warehouse, oh, which read the data warehouse. And to be able to have this tool and to have teachers already using it on third, starting the third week of school of year is very encouraging because several of you came last year to the evaluation process. We were looking at this project as well as several others. One of the key things we wanted is that a tool that, that was teacher-friendly, you know, that is intuitive. It wasn't going to be a difficult process to understand and learn, but that when you get into it, you also can get into the resources as well as doing more analytics. And that is, that's really where the rubber hits the road is really, okay, now that we have these results, now what? What, how am I going to use this information to impact the instruction in my classroom? And to have a tool like this that knows where students are at as well as the resources and steps for instruction, those are important things as teams are having to have those conversations. So, that, that's in a nutshell what we have for you this evening. Again, we'll have a greater, I guess, look at during the board data retreat in December. Principals will be sharing their vision card. We've also have a few things we'll be sharing with you as well. You can be a little bit more deeper as far as what IQ and what data we have. Discussion or questions?
I have a question. So, you say that you put, you can put in local fields.
Yes.
Who enters that information then? Is the teacher entering that into the computer?
Yes. If a teacher administers the assessment, they enter the information.
Okay. And who has access to that information then when they enter it? Is it the same? I mean, another teacher would get all of that same information?
So, if I, for example, when I was teaching second grade, if I was utilizing this data warehouse, I would enter my students' information for my local assessments and I would also have access to all the other second graders in my building, but that would be all I have access to because that is what I am working on. If I needed to go talk about first grade or third grade, I'd go talk to my colleagues, but what I have access to in the data warehouse is simply my grade level.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Would a parent be able to request the data that's being stored in the data warehouse on their child? And we could export just theirs on, and give it to the parent?
Yeah, there's a, within IQ, there is a place where you can draw up a student's information, test history from, because we have five years back, it would hold the past five years. And so, that would be a situation where you'd have a conference with your teacher and that report could be utilized.
If I could follow up during the discussion on the preview, I thought we talked about a dashboard, a parent dashboard that you can have that, when a parent comes in for parent-teacher conference, you can have one sheet. Here's their test scores, here's their attendance, we've heard in, any other administrative information that shed light on that, so. I have a question for you on MCA's, if I could. Was there a difference this year between, everything is computerized this year for MCA threes? Now, does that allow multiple times to take the test?
It's a great question. Reading, this was the first, this past spring was the first time that students took it online. There were numerous interruptions to the testing process statewide for the reading test. Our students also experienced those interruptions. What those interruptions looked like is they would come to the computer, they would log on, take a couple of questions, get booted off. Or they'd log on again, computer would freeze, booted off. These were not issues from our, that were localized to our district. Those were issues from our state center. And so, our students were impacted in that manner. The state has looked into it. Their independent review has yielded that that really had a very negligible impact on student scores. But nonetheless, I mean, it wasn't the ideal testing environment we would want our kids in. On the math side of things, in 2012, students could take the math test online up to three times and the state would take the student's best score. For 2013, they could take a practice test up to, they could take a practice test multiple times, but then every student had to take the test in the spring for accountability purposes. Regardless of how they did on the practice test leading up to it, that those scores were not to be accurate. So, that was a change that the MBE had within our testing environment between 2012 and 2014.
And was reading, you could only take it once?
Correct.
Okay. Because I remember reading some of the local papers that that was one explanation why scores may have dropped.
And is this how they're going to continue it now? I mean, is this pattern that they want to continue the test?
The MBE fully intends to have testing online to the extent possible. I mean, they're moving away from paper and pencil. The last group right now that is on paper and pencil is our high school because our high school math is still doing the MCA dues for grad purposes, but that will change. And in 14-15, all statewide testing for the MCA purposes will be online.
But as far as frequency, I mean, only taking it the one?
That's my understanding is one time for accountability purposes.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The District Staff Development Committee roster.
Yes. Board members, Dr. Grover, in your packet is the roster for the District Staff Development Committee for 2013-14. This is a group you've heard a lot about and you've seen their names before. This is a group that's been working, we've merged our technology committee and staff development committees together, membership together. They worked last year on recommendation for data warehouse. They worked last year on School G Pilot, several other things. And so, this is a group then bring forward for board approval.
Do you have a motion to accept the District Staff Development Committee roster?
So much.
By Stacy.
Next.
Go ahead.
Second.
Second by Lee. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
The opening of school report.
It's always a pleasure to welcome our students back to school. We spend all of our summer getting ready for them to return, making each year just a little bit better and a little bit newer. This year, our student enrollment has never been higher. We have surpassed that 7,300 mark of total students in our district. Our school board and administration has been watching this enrollment throughout the summer, have been working very hard to decrease class of the average class sizes, starting at the secondary level this time, knowing that the highest number of students are at the secondary level. Even with the constraints of the high school, we've tried to add as many teachers as we can find spaces for them to teach. In this given year, at the middle school, we've also tried to reduce class sizes, not that there's not one or two out there that are anomalies, but for the most part, our class sizes have gone down at least two students per, per level. So, we're, we're in that 32 kind of average for our high school, 30 to 32 in our middle school. When we get to our elementaries, we try to keep those even lower, as you know, and we've taken great strides this year and, and put a lot of dollars toward making sure that we have those class sizes that are equitable throughout all of our different home, our neighborhood schools, starting with kindergarten. We anticipated to have about 485 kindergarten students this fall and as of today, we have 517. So, as a result, we have added two and a half teachers this year, more than we had last year in kindergarten. And in addition, we've been able to bring that class size down from an average of 21.5 to 19.5 in this given school year. So, our average class sizes in all of our kindergarteners is just a little over 19. There are a few that are smaller and there are a few that hover around that low twenties, but we try, we've been working really hard to keep them there in those numbers. Throughout our elementaries, we have a few combination classes where we have two grade levels in one room classroom. We have those in about half of our schools where we've had unfriendly numbers and we've been able to fix that by putting two grade levels together in a small class size and make that work. We have outstanding teachers that work really hard to make those opportunities really be opportunities for our children and for our families. So, throughout our, our district, we have good class sizes this year that we're very proud of on the most part. As we look to next year already, we're beginning that planning phase for our all-day kindergarten that will be funded by the state. So, we've already met with principals. We're going through walkthroughs this week Jeff is taking of all the elementary buildings to look for potential sites for all-day kindergarten. Right now, about two-thirds of our kindergarten students are in the all-day program with one-third choosing the half-day option. When next year arrives, there will be no more tuition, it will be paid for by the state and we anticipate to have about the 80-20 split at that point, if not more so. So, we'll be doing parent information sessions beginning in late October with kindergarten live option in November and continue to educate our preschool families about the wonderful options we have here in Prior Lake Savage for their five-year-olds in the fall of 2014. We'll be looking for spaces for that, those classrooms, so that's the reason for the walkthroughs and we'll be looking for different ways that we can configure on an annual basis to make sure that we're utilizing the space that we have to the best advantage we have. The big news this fall was of course, the heat. We started the week before Labor Day this year with approval from the state of Minnesota due to the construction that's going on throughout our district. Unfortunately, we were caught that first week in that severe heat wave. The first four days, Westwood Elementary did not have any air conditioning, but on the, at the, toward the end of the day, right after lunch actually on Thursday, the air conditioning was switched over and they were cooled and chilled, ready for Friday. That was not to be the case at Hidden Oaks Middle School and because both of our, our schools, Hidden Oaks and Twin Oaks changed classes by the hour and students moved back and forth across the street, both of our schools were impacted by very severe heat in those buildings. So, we were put in a position where we needed to close school the very first week of school for that particular audience. The rest of our buildings are air-conditioned and Hidden Oaks will be fully air-conditioned by the springtime, could be even yet this fall, although I don't anticipate we're going to be needing it. Today was a hot day, not as hot as we thought it was going to be, but still hot in that building. And I give a lot of credit, as has been said before, to the staff and administration and to Jim Dalwo and his team for what they've done to make sure that our buildings and our students and staff are as comfortable as possible. Other news is that Glendale Elementary was recently named 2013-14 MESA, which is Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association School of Excellence. Principal Sam Richardson and his staff worked all last year with their PTC and with their community to complete this application and they are one of 12 schools throughout the state that's receiving this honor. This prestigious honor was awarded to the K-5 school for its commitment to 21st century teaching and learning and is the only South Metro school to earn the award in this given year. So, congratulations to Sam Richardson and to his staff. Our new website will go live on October 21st. It is in the proofing stages now and board members will be able to preview the site before it goes live, but we're very excited about the opportunities it'll bring to families and being able to navigate it will, this particular new website will be very easy for you and I think you'll see a very positive difference. And then, talking about, finally about our high school, Prior Lake High School, the addition plans are moving forward as planned. Just last Friday, we received the approval from the State Department for, on the, the report that we needed to send to them, the review and comment came back to us with the commissioner's signature on it. So, that allows us to move into that next phase where we'll be posting in the paper and then moving out for bed. So, it's moving along nicely and we're very excited about that. We know that the work, major part of the work will be done over the winter and then finished off over the summer, which is why we're closing or ending school, started our school early, ending it early so that we have two weeks, four weeks of extra time for that completion of the high school and then the renovation of Twin Oaks and Greenwood over next summer. But that is all moving along nicely. The addition will be 36,000 square feet into three stories, much like the other pods. It's a little bit smaller than the other pods, but it certainly will meet our needs for 21st century learning and we're very excited about that, that addition being completed for the start of school next year. As we move forward now into the 2013-14 school year, we have a lot of very positive things happening and we look forward to working together to make sure that this is just the very best year for our students and for our families.
Thank you. Any questions about back to school? I commend the teachers and the students bearing through the heat once again and we thank you. I'll move on to the Annual Columbus Day Resolution. Seems that it falls on our board plate every year. We have a resolution, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 719, state of Minnesota, as follows, that Columbus Day, October 14th, 2013, will not be considered a holiday. The regular scheduled, the regular board meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 719 will be held and business conducted as usual. Does a motion to accept the resolution?
Smoothed.
By Dan, second?
I'll take the motion.
By Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
Thank you, real quick.
Correct.
Aye.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mike? Thank you. That carries seven zero. Constitution Week proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion and now therefore, we, the School Board of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, do hereby proclaim September 16th through 20th, 2013 to be Constitution Week within the Prior Lake Savage Area School District. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing Constitution Week to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution I had in 1787. In official recognition here thereof, I hereby affix my signature this ninth day of September So, we'll move on to the approval of the Joint Powers Agreement.
I can start and then you may add. Rich is our liaison to the Southwest Metro Educational Cooperative, previously known as MURFSEC, the Minnesota River Valley Educational Cooperative and Carver Scout Educational Cooperative. Those two organizations have joined. The Joint Powers Agreement has some very minor changes in it. They're more cosmetic than anything, but we do have a new Joint Powers Agreement before you that we ask you to consider and to approve tonight.
Yeah. The changes include MURFSEC is now referred to as Southwest Metro, Montgomery is now referred to as Tri-City School District and they've also removed some information about financial aspects of a building in Jordan that's now paid off for, so those were removed from the Joint Powers Agreement.
Do you have a motion to accept the...
Do a motion to accept the resolution revising the, uh, joint powers agreement.
I'll make the motion.
By Rich. Second. By Stacy. Any questions about this agreement? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
Does this require roll call? It's like, yeah. Yeah, the language at the end makes it, yeah.
You're gonna start highlighting that.
Aye.
Chad. Rich.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
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 Carry seven zero. Uh, we'll move on to the School Board goal, uh, review and adoption. Um, at our School Board meeting on, uh, August nineteenth, uh, we worked on the, uh, goals for the two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, fifteen governance plan. From that, we drafted, uh, the goals and, uh, brought forward for review and adoption. Do I have a motion to accept the goals and adoption for the School Board for those two years?
Is this, um, the governance plan, the three-year School Board governance plan and the goals?
Yes.
That you're asking for? I'll wait for discussion.
What's that?
I'll wait for discussion.
Waiting for a motion?
I'm waiting for a motion accepted. By Dan?
Second.
By Chad. Uh, discussion.
Um, the, the governance, or the, you know, the governance plan looks pretty similar to what we discussed that night.
Okay.
Um, the School Board draft goals, I just wanted some clarification. Um, what actually is our goal? Is it the highlighted A, B, C part, or the things underneath it? All the topics are bulleted points underneath it.
Just come on, I'm getting to that. So, your question is, what are the goals?
Yeah, because some of the ones, if, if the bullets are action items, that makes sense to me. If they're a goal, that doesn't make sense to me, because it's not written as a goal. Um, if there's any number that I could pick out that just say, um, the topic, but don't say anything relating to it.
I think they're basically action items from that, uh, overlying...
Okay. So, our goals are the same as our strategic plan?
Yes.
It's my understanding that, that the strategic directions, um, give context for the work that you're going to be doing as a School Board in the coming year. So, basically, what you had up in your governance role was placed underneath each of the strategic directions, very similar, you'll see a parallel between, uh, thirteen, fourteen at the top in the governance plan as then as it gets put into the goals.
Okay, I, my confusion is that, um, for example, one of the bullets says employee benefits. Well, what about employee benefits? So, I, I'm not quite sure that I agree with the format of the way this is laid out as to what we actually are doing. Or personnel contract negotiations is another one, um, that sticks out for me. I understand and I agree that our goals should be aligned with the strategic plan, or do I have it? Um, I'm just not quite sure of the format of the way this is laid out, if it, if it really gives us direction as to what we're doing, and I hadn't seen this till I, till this was sent to us. So, I'm, I'm not sure, maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, if, if there's other board members that like the way and appreciate it.
A lot of it are hard to define as, as, we have a financial accountability to the community, and then from that, there's things we can cover each year, but I don't see how we, we tell the community what we're gonna give to those areas until we can negotiate those, I...
Usually bullet items have an action. Like, for instance, finalize employee benefits.
And I'm used to writing goals in a smart fashion, specific, measurable, attainable, so, action words, like Chad was saying.
I guess I'm not comfortable with...
Is it, is it necessary for us to truly have goals, quite honestly? Uh, you know, I, I think as we've been transitioning, the governance plan, I think, was sort of the path that we're going. I mean, at the end of the day, our goal really is to have successful school district and to support, you know, our superintendent and, and administration and the teachers to do that, and, and I, I guess I felt that the governance plan was the framework for us to kind of work within, to say, hey, as long as the things that we're bringing to the board table and discussing in our, you know, um, work sessions are consistent with supporting that, then, then we really are achieving, I believe, our goal, which is to be an effective, um, governance body for the school district. You know, and I think in the past, when we didn't have something like that governance plan, the, the goal somewhat ma, made more sense, because they were sort of, if you will, the tangible things to, to Rich's point, the measurable things that we were gonna use to say, hey, are we, you know, uh, you know, accomplishing the things that we need to, but m, my personal belief is with our governance plan that that really should be the, the framework, if you will, that we're, that we're driving to, un, unless there is something that we should be able to tangibly say, here is a measurable outcome that we're looking for in a given year, or, or whatever.
Yeah, I know we have those in our, I want to get the wording right, uh, three-year School Board governance plan.
Because really, all of those, I think, line up as bullet points, leave, as, if you go back, I think you can probably find all of them.
I don't disagree with you, um, I just, I don't agree with this format of the goals.
Yep.
I, I can't support that. I actually thought this was what we were working off of, um, but we've always talked about having board goals.
Right.
So, I guess there's some terminology that would need to be changed. The governance plan makes sense to me, the draft of the goals does not really make sense to me. It seems somewhat redundant.
Should that, your goals be called something else?
I'm not sure that that needs to exist.
Right.
Okay.
It could be that we just have the governance plan. That's what I'm throwing out there is...
But then we, but then if we do that, we need to change referring to goals, rather we have a governance plan rather than goals.
Right.
And you're correctly, the, um, the governance plan wording, everything, was reformatted and flipped. Um, if you can see on the left, the strategic direction stayed the same, the verbiage stayed pretty much the same, we just placed it underneath there. So, if you're comfortable with the three-year governance plan that you created in August that really has the, uh, all the wording in there that is needed, then that's, that's an option.
Is there anything in policy that we are required to have a, set goals?
As I'm sitting here, I was trying to think of that, and I, I, I guess I'd have to look under, would you look at that? There is a section on board, you know, parameters, activities, how we're set up, and so, I'd have to go back and look at that specifically. And maybe it's just a matter of changing wording then, and we could bring that back to the board.
Okay, wh, in which we've done in the past. So, we, so would people feel comfortable approving the governance plan or two-year governance plan? If we do need those goals, we'll...
Yeah, the, I, I mean, the thing that I thought was really, uh, beneficial about that conversation and discussion is, this governance plan becomes much more of a living document, right? So, in the past, we would kind of approve goals around this time, and then we would maybe come back and review in the spring, did we accomplish them or not? Whereas, I don't think that we're going to be visiting this every month, but I, I think it was expected that a, as a study concludes and we find, hey, there's an action that we need to accomplish now, as a result of that, it should find its way onto, well, in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, there's this expectation of the board to support the action that was taken. So, so I think this becomes a, actually, a, a more meaningful and, and supportive document of, of what we as a board are expected to do.
And I think we'll bring this forward every, well, as needed.
Right.
With, with highlighted items, or, and probably even a date.
So, it should be much more timely than what we've had in the past, quite honestly.
Right, and that's what we were asking for, um, as a board, is, you know, when we approve these initiatives, and then there were times when we never heard about them again. So, no news, I guess, was supposed to be good news, but, um, we always wanted to hear that the programs were running, that our money was being spent effectively, and this will help that, and I guess that's what I thought we were doing. So, I was surprised to see that second section, because those aren't goals to me then, like was written, so... So, yes, I would be in favor. Um, I think you have a motion.
Yeah, there are men in motion.
Yeah, well, some men have an amendment to the motion, just to accept the governance plan, and if we deem it necessary that we need to rewrite it due to policy, we'll revise the policy.
So, I would propose that friendly amendment to the original motion to remove the, uh, stated board goals as, as presented.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
By Dan. Um, all those in favor of amending the initial motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Do I, let's see.
Now, we vote on the amended motion.
Let's vote on the amendment, actually, the amended motion to just adopt the governance plan for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
The whole, the whole plan?
The whole plan, yep.
You just said two thousand thirteen, fourteen, I'm, the whole plan.
Uh, the three-year plan, yeah, it should say sixteen, there was a typo in that, at the top. Uh, second line, three-year board governance plan thirteen through fifteen, it should say thirteen through sixteen. It's way at the top. Is that, do you need...
Yeah. Well, the motion's already out.
The motion's already on the table.
We just need to vote...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. We'll make that correction and then, uh, put it in your boxes. Uh, we'll move on to policy. Uh, the second final reading of, uh, a few policies, we have policy five oh two, and I think we'll take them individually.
Five oh two is search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, and students' person. Um, we have, um, put a slight amendment into this ver, uh, versus the MSBA, um, wording and verbiage, um, and we put that before you last time, um, and there was some discussion, um, about it at that time. I don't know if there's been any other qu, questions or comments since that time, so I present it to you as amended.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept policy five oh two as amended?
Second.
Stacy, second, by Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Uh, policy five oh six dot two.
That is use of police, uh, police policy, police resource liaison officers and building crisis response teams called the BCRT to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. Uh, we've tried to clarify it so that it's, uh, it says what we want it to say, um, and uses the right language there, and changes that building crisis response team verbiage throughout the, uh, document. We did take out the negatives, um, as we discussed last time, and talked about what we will do, not necessarily the list of what we won't do. Um, we said, we leave the, setting it in a positive tone, um, then is a more positive, um, way of presenting this policy to you and to our public.
Do I have a motion to accept policy five oh two dot two as amended?
Smooth.
By Lee. Second.
Second.
By Dan. Any questions about this? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Policy five twenty-one.
This is student disability nondiscrimination. We've changed some language in here, uh, from a handicapped to disabled, from handicapped to disability, and, um, from non-handicapped to typical. So, there's just some verbiage changes that, uh, are in keeping with the rest of our documentation.
Do I have a motion to accept policy five twenty-one?
Fifty minutes.
By Stacy. Second motion. By Rich. Any questions? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Uh, administrative reports, the superintendent's report.
The only thing I have to report is that tonight before a board meeting, we had our, uh, joint meeting with our Savage City Council, uh, again, uh, focused on the collaboration that we have between the two groups, uh, ongoing, uh, and, uh, a very positive relationship as we look to our future. Uh, we talked about number of housing permits, the growth in our savage schools, um, the use, um, the positive use of our, uh, police liaison officer, um, and ways that our city has helped us throughout this fall already, uh, with bringing water and fans to Hidden Oaks when it was needed, um, but also just in the ability to have those short, brief conversations as we move forward, uh, that are needed when we talk about the hi, high school addition, or whatever the topic is that impacts our schools and our city. So, that was a very positive meeting that we have annually, generally.
Thanks. Uh, administrative reports, Julie.
About our audit isn't complete, but we're still working on trying to get a couple final things done and get some reporting back from them, so you should be seeing that on the, if we do see them on the, the, the next one, and then we'll be bringing them to the board for approval at the end of October, or, or, or November. And the lobby certification is, um, information is in, they haven't received any reporting back from the Department of Education, and I expect to see that publicly on Wednesday because we have a meeting on Thursday for, to review all of that information. Do we have all of our, um, anything that we refunded, or are we studying what the system is around that, um, lobby certification to be, um, kind of computed in there, so that we should have all that information, and we'll be working on that for approval at the end of this one, um, for the preliminary lobby certification. Right, you know, everything works, yeah. Just wanted to be aware that we are working on all of that information, and we'll bring your updates as soon as we have them.
Okay, thank you. Jeff from Matt, anything? Okay. Uh, committee reports. Anyone have any, anything happening? Uh, Sue and I attended the AMST, uh...
Board meeting.
Board, actually, executive board meeting, uh, last Friday, uh, lots of data, same people who did our demographic study, uh, had a report to us about the South Metro. Um, actually, it was, it was mainly metro, um, I don't think a lot of it pertained to us, there were a lot of things that stood out, uh, in their information, uh, that were probably contrary to what they brought to us. There was quite a bit hostility toward referendums in the, uh, main metro area, however, we, we found just somewhat the opposite down here, so, um, lots of data, lots of somewhat non-school-related, but, uh, it was a, a data day, so... Any others? Move on to, uh, student council.
Um, we were approached by Mrs. Gunning, she is, she works in the media center, and, uh, Mr. Lund actually talked to her about making a new design to make the media center, um, just very twenty-first century and very, like, new and tech, like, technologically advanced. And, um, this summer, she met with a designer, and they got a design, like, beautiful design figured out, and right before they wanted to start construction, the budget was cut out, I'm, I'm sure you guys are probably aware of this. And, um, so, Mrs. Gunning approached our technology committee, and I just want to let you guys know, this is something that we might be bringing up sooner or later within the next couple of meetings. Um, other than that, homecoming is next week, so we're, we've been pretty busy planning for that with, um, coronation, getting all the spirit there set up, meeting with ad administration, and it's going pretty smoothly, so we're excited.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to, uh, future events, uh, we have the Fall Community Fest, uh, September sixteenth, six o'clock, um, same night as, uh, high school coronation, that's at seven o'clock at the high school. Constitution Day is, uh, September seventeenth, and the homecoming festivities from the eighteenth through the twenty-first. Uh, we have a joint board meeting with the, uh, Laker Educational Foundation on September eighteenth, six-thirty here at the District Service Center, and a board study session on the twenty-third, six o'clock here. Any future events anyone else has? Say none, uh, at this time, we're gonna close the session for a few moments to discuss some negotiating strategy. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Smooth.
By Dan?
Second.
By Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.